Good evening and welcome to the meeting of the Wareham School Committee. Today is Thursday, October 15th. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast by WCTV and an audio recording is also being made by Ms. Wickston. If we could just rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda tonight is public participation. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the committee? Seeing no one, we'll move on to good news. Would anyone like to share any good news?
I just would like to say I saw the COVID dashboard on our district website and I think that's a very good addition as it helps promote transparency going forward with possible cases. So I think it's a good move.
Thank you. Okay, I haven't seen that. Great. Anyone else? Mike?
So I don't know if anyone else was going to mention it, but we all toured the new mine at building.
Yes, I was definitely going to mention that, yeah.
So that was great. I mean, I think we were all there except for Ms. Morgan.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
And it's bigger than I even thought. I mean, in that innovation hub is much bigger than I thought it was going to be. It was just great to actually get a real sense of things when you were there and, you know, we actually got to view, I think, just about all the areas.
Yeah, yeah.
The gym, cafeteria, everything, of where, you know, where it will be anyway. Also wanted to mention some good news that the -- I appeared before the selectmen on Tuesday with Ms. Rhonda Vugan and Ms. Bakayaki came as well and we -- they voted in favor of recommending the citizen petition article to name the new school, the Wareham Elementary School. I was very grateful for that, told them so. And just moving on to town meeting, whenever that's going to be, because that's been postponed to what's going to be October 26th and now it's, we don't know when it's going to be. But I'm very happy with that outcome.
Great. April, did you say?
I was going to mention the tour of the new school building and how it's really going to be an incredible asset for the kids of the school. And I know that I've seen a lot of people posting, you know, on some of like the town pages about the size, but I think people sort of forget that we once had six elementary schools that we are now housing in one building and with room for growth. So I think that it's definitely going to be a huge asset to the town and the kids to have such an amazing space to learn. So thank you for organizing the tour.
Yeah, definitely. Yeah, and I just wanted to say thank you to Chad Crittenden and Mark Adrian from PMA for the tour that day. They really did a really nice job and I really appreciate the hard work. We're so fortunate to have them working on this project. And then I also wanted to just say, since our last meeting, that October 5th date has come and so there are more kids in the school and just how much, you know, how great it is to have more kids back in the school, all the kids who are able to be back in school. And just a thank you to everyone who's made that possible, custodians, teachers, cafeteria workers, bus drivers, educators, superintendent, assistant superintendent, everyone who has is working so hard to make that happen for the kids. So thank you. And next on the agenda is the report of our student representative who we're welcoming back tonight. Thank you, Emily, for joining us.
Yay!
I just have a few announcements and some things to share.
Okay.
For one, I just, one thing I noticed in the [inaudible].
She's out of practice.
There we go. Oh, okay, that makes sense. Anyways, just a few announcements and other fun things to share. First thing I noticed going back to school was just how involved everyone was just running things smoothly and whatnot. My peers and I are very thankful for the meals that the lunch leaders are handing out. Like, they're full. Like, there's milks, there's juices, there's breakfast, there's sandwiches. So that's really great. This year, a lot of like the clubs have to resort to virtual things. So for example, Drama, they're doing an original Duke Fox musical. I don't really know what that entails, but it sounds interesting. They have many great opportunities to harness creativity from a safe distance from Drama. That's what I hear from a lot of kids that are doing that virtually. That goes for sports too. Unfortunately, they're not also in session. But a few things, a few kids from Wareham are joining. It's with ORR. It's a cross-country thing that we're doing. I'm actually in it. I went today and it's basically, we're training at a safe distance and hopefully everything will be semi-normal and there will be meets again for all sports. So that's another resourceful thing we're doing. Other clubs such as, I think, National Honor Society, we're working on trying to honor our teachers. Key Club and Student Council are getting involved with community youth empowerment. It's for a trunk or treat. I'm really excited for it. It's on Halloween, I think, so it's three to seven and a bunch of us, like volunteers and whatnot, we're going to have like trunks of like treats. It's obviously, it's given. But I think that'll be a great way to bring everyone together further from a safe distance, obviously. So, yeah, a lot of us are working through it and doing a lot of things that are positive for the community, but with all the safety precautions and whatnot, because I hear just around us, other towns are like in the red zone. But I feel like since I've been at Wareham the past couple of days that I've actually been a person, I don't really think I've felt unsafe.
Good.
Like, I see a lot of videos online of like other kids, like posting like the hallways in their schools and they're packed. It's crazy. And I just want to applaud Wareham for being able to manage that. I think we're doing pretty well, at least at the high school, from what I've seen. So I just want to applaud everyone for doing that. So, yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Emily. I'm just reminded, Ms. Wickston had asked me to mention that she's having a little bit of a hard time hearing us with being able to take good minutes, so we just have to pay a little bit more attention. And do you guys mind if I show?
I can turn it off. I was going to ask you.
A hard time hearing, yeah.
Yeah, I was going to ask.
Thank you.
Much better.
Sorry, Jamie, I forgot to say that at the beginning. All right, next on the agenda is the minutes of our meeting on October 1st. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Is there any questions or discussion on the minutes? No? Okay, then we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained? It's 4-0-0. Thank you. Okay. Next on the agenda is early literacy acquisitions with Dr. Schwam. So I just want to say thank you. This item was actually placed on the agenda at my request because Ms. Morgan had some questions and unfortunately, she's not able to be here tonight. So, but thank you for placing this on the agenda at my request.
So would you like me to present?
Well, I mean, you've gone through all the trouble unless you want to wait. I did ask her to send me, I mean, she sent me one of her questions, so I'll leave that up to you, if you'd like to wait until she's here.
No, that's fine. I'm happy to, you know, I've arranged to answer whatever question. I've probably over-prepared like anyone who was ever a good teacher does.
Uh-huh.
I think I was a pretty good teacher at one point. So I'm happy to present. I also have invited Carrie Thurston to be here, live, or Zoom, so to speak. So she's hooked up and ready to also be here to answer any of your questions that you might have.
Okay.
But I'm just curious, I've answered questions about her for now three and a half years, four, four and a half, it's going on four. So I'm curious as to what the issue is or what the questions are. I have long emails explaining, we have millions of pieces of data that talk, that speak very directly to the work. So I'm just curious where the.
I think the questions just originated this time from an expense, from a, you know, from a bill that was generated.
Okay.
That's where the question came. So, and also I would just ask you, for Kevin's benefit, maybe just to give a little bit of a background of who Carrie is and what she does for the district.
This will help.
Okay, all right. I thought it might, but I just wanted to.
Emily, it's going to be right on your end.
I'm sorry. With the distancing, it makes it very difficult. Is that good right there?
Can we remove me from that somehow? I don't know. So Carrie Thurston, can you see our school committee or no? Oh, are you muted?
Sorry, I can see a picture of you and I can see Jamie's name.
Okay. So we have our, we have the superintendent who's sitting behind me. We're socially distanced, so it's a little bit difficult. So Dr. Shaverhood is behind me. Jamie is running the show, making sure you're heard and seen. We have Emily Robert, our student representative. April Rossi is a member of our school committee. Mike Flaherty, another member of the school committee. Joyce Bakayaki. Mary Morgan, who had originally posed the question, could not make it this evening. And Kevin Brigholi. All right? So I'll go through the PowerPoint first and then we can answer any questions they might have. Okay, so before Carrie Thurston, when I came to the district in 2014 and 15, we implemented a data system, a way to collect data from early elementary students that they didn't have before, so that we could get data fast and figure out where our kids were and then make decisions based on that information. When we collected the data for our kindergarten and grade one and grade two students using a system called FAST, which is Formative Assessment System for Teachers, these were the results. So 64% of our students were low, 9% were below, 23% were average, and 4% were above at the end of the school year. So we had, I have the data from the beginning to the end, but I just wanted to. And then that same group of children, what I was very worried about as they moved through was that in the fall when they came into grade one, it appeared that they hadn't been to school at all in kindergarten, so there was a huge summer slide component, which was very concerning to me. And I was hearing throughout the district, the kids were not prepared for grade-level material and obviously, we were very concerned about that. And so, just by happenstance, and reading has been an issue, I was an English teacher at the middle school and I started 23 years ago now, but we used to listen to this a lot, kids can't read, they're just not reading, right? There's an issue with reading. And even when I was principal in another district, we always had this group of students that we just couldn't reach. We just couldn't get them to ever make it. They were in this from kindergarten and they never got out of the hole. And so I understood that what we needed to do was fix it there so that as kids moved up, they had the skills that they needed so that they could actually attend at their grade level. And so fortunately, through the College Board, I went to China and I met a superintendent from Maine who knew this woman, Carrie Thurston, who was a special education director at one point and had this way of helping students who couldn't seem to gather what they needed to learn to be able to read. And so I called her. And that's where the story begins. Her first time here in the district was, she started working with our children and teachers in February of 2017. This is after. So we see that something's going on, right? This is not specific data, it's a culmination of all of the data that FAST gives us as it gathers our information. It's not specific. It sort of takes an overview picture of our kids. So what's most compelling is the average, the yellow. All of a sudden, we see something happening there, right? Where we say, wow, this is amazing. And here, I did a little comparison of the different groups. They're the same cohort, but as you notice, in kindergarten, in 2017, 64% low and in 2019, 23%. And these are all spring, so this is after the work, at the end of the school year. And as you see, the average there keeps moving up. And what was completely amazing is last fall, the third graders who were with Carrie's, who were part of Carrie's work in the beginning group in February of 2017, because I was so worried about the loss of skills when they went home for the summer and then came back, obviously, I looked right away, you know, I wanted to see what's going on. And that third grade class actually gained points over the summer and they most definitely didn't lose anything. And so what that says is that somehow, what it is that we're teaching, what it is that Carrie's bringing to us is this way in which those skills that are so incredibly important for school life become automatic, fluent. They're not thought about anymore, the kids just know. And there's a reason behind that, there's science behind that. So just as a quick overview, the plan, we did right from the beginning, her plan wasn't to stay, it was not to stay here forever, you know? She wanted to come in, make a difference, and then go out, right? Train the people. And so this was what we had talked about. Next year, we were hoping she stayed for the half of year as a transition to the, as we moved into the new school. But depending on what happens this year, which she's working diligently with our group now to make sure that our kids are staying as much up to speed as possible under the circumstances, but, you know, we'll have to take a look at that too, right? Just to make sure that we're, that what we're doing is making sure that our kids have those skills necessary so that they can be successful throughout their academic life and their life too. So this is Albert Einstein when he was a kid. And Carrie actually gave me this from the, I think it's from the Washington Post or one of those wonderful newspapers, but he had a really large colossal corpus callosum. And when it comes to this particular piece of neural real estate, it's pretty clear that size matters. And this is him as an adult, grown up. And this explains the work. Basically, this is what we're doing. So the corpus callosum carries the electrical signals between the brain's right and left hemisphere, stretching nearly the full length of the brain from behind the forehead to the nape of the neck. The corpus callosum is the dense network of neural fibers that make brain regions with very different functions work together. And the way we use our brain when it comes to learning to read matters because you need both sides. It's not mutually exclusive to one side of the brain or the other side of the brain. They need each other to connect in order for our kids to learn to read. It's not easy, it's not an easy task. So Carrie, do you want to talk to the pyramid that you put up?
Sure. Can you hear me okay? Is there too much of an echo or is it good?
No, we can hear.
I can't see anybody, so I'm just going to assume unless I get a sign that. So the reason that a lot of times interventions in schools are not as effective is when you look at a student who's struggling, the first go-to is always to the very top of the pyramid, which is academic learning. And so if you have a child who is not a fluent reader, for example, you assess, you find out that they're not so fluent in their reading, and what happens is we give them more passages for reading. And so we consistently attack the intervention needs with the same type of strategies at the top of the pyramid. Learning begins at the bottom of the pyramid and this is based on William and Schellenberger's Pyramid of Learning, the central nervous system. And so the very base of the period begins with something as simple as being able to balance. And so we can know whether or not a child is somebody who will potentially have more difficulty with learning to read and acquiring and retaining skills simply by whether or not they can balance on one leg for a period of time. Proprioception is a child's awareness of their body and space. And so a lot of times when you see kids walking through the hallway, you'll notice that they touch the wall. Those are students who immediately are telling you that they have some deficits in this area. And then we work our way up through the pyramid. And so while we do look to support the academic learning, there's a much deeper layer of coaching teachers in how to have a skill set that can tackle the lower parts of the pyramid that previously were always thought to be things that needed to require specialized service. And anybody can really teach a kid to balance. That's not something that requires occupational therapy, physical therapy. And so it's giving teachers tools that they would not have been given in a collegiate setting because colleges don't focus on those science of reading skills. There are very few states that even mandate any course in the science of reading. And, you know, Andrea speaks to, Dr. Schwam speaks to, you know, Carrie's work, teachers have been amazing. We were just looking at regression data for, because everybody's so worried about these students who have been in a really difficult circumstance. And in looking at the second grade data that's come through to date, so 35 students, there's a 0% regression. We've had no student show any regression. And we in fact have shown that the priority one students on average have made a gain of 1.7 reading levels during the time that they've been off from school. And your teachers are really diligent about providing services during the March to June period.
So here, I love this slide because it's kind of funny, but it's basically a picture of the brain and how it's so necessary that those two parts work together. Carrie continues to do some deep research and identify challenges and specific activities to strengthen the corpus callosum. This is the superhighway that affects emotional and learning development. Learning to read requires the use of both hemispheres of the brain. And some unanticipated interesting data, and we have a whole bunch. We've done, Kevin, just so that you know, I've presented data for now, going on four years, right, of the DRAs and FNP's and all of the various other components. So we're not just looking at one, we're looking at many elements of data. And we, and Carrie actually creates data walls and teachers collect their own data on top of the data that we do that's more specific. And so we, we're always triangulating to make sure that what we're doing is working and moving us in this direction.
So you anticipated my question as well. What assessment tools do you use? And for the numbers we saw earlier, was that triangulated data or was that specific to the FAST?
That was just, yep, that was just one time, you know, I, data is my safe place. When I get overwhelmed, I just go and I start to look at data because it just is good for me. So I one day just thought, I'm going to go back all the way when I started FAST and I'm going to look at the grades and how they look at the end. And I collected it and I put it all on the sheet and I didn't, I was amazed at what I saw. I didn't expect that outcome, to be honest with you. So it was a surprise, but it was sort of a very global look. We've seen other successes with the DRAs and the FNP's and the other things that we've presented. We've also seen success in our MCAS scores moving up. We just had a NUIA test for grade five, which is a NUIA growth, MAP growth assessment that we've just started at the middle school. And last year was our first year and the grade five students, I can't tell you, they did phenomenally well, like unbelievably well. So we're really amazed to see what's happening in the shift. And Carrie works through grade four. So she originally started, really focuses pre-K, K1 and 2, but she's also been available, highly available a couple of years ago, 3, 4, and then they sort of got down to a system and have done very well as well.
And what percentages of teachers would you say have been trained in K through 4?
All of them, right, Carrie? All teachers, yeah?
Yes.
Because she integrates herself in.
You know, what a teacher needs changes based on the faces that they have in front of them. And so the whole mindset behind the work is to increase the tools that teachers may or may not just have had an opportunity to be exposed to. And so we work right beside the teachers with the students that they have. And there generates a relationship and conversation about, this is what I'm seeing, what could this mean? How do we address these sort of concerns? What strategies can we use? And so there hasn't been anybody, K4, pre-K4 actually, and your pre-K teachers are amazing, that hasn't been offered opportunity for deepening skill sets in the science of reading.
So the unanticipated results that may be directly connected to Carrie's work along with other work that we're doing are, our special education numbers are unbelievably different than they've ever been. So if you look, in 1718, we had 52 referrals and 38 students qualified for an IEP. Then there were 44 and there were 19 that qualified. And 40 and 16 qualified. And then if you look in at grade three, four numbers, they're a much smaller group of kids, you know, people in that group, but nonetheless, that equates to probably almost $600,000 not spent. If you take what it costs to educate a special education student, which is around $16,000 approximately, to assess, it's $1,000 to $1,200 to get all of that squared away. Because what I think essentially is happening, and our kids are doing very well, I think what essentially is happening is we're catching it before and finding the solution to the problem, helping kids practice that, get what they need so that they can then be successful.
Well, I mean, the money, more important than the money is the success of the students.
Yeah, I don't care about the money, to be honest. I mean, I do because we have to work and move, but that's, this is not why we're doing the work.
So I just have a quick question. So on, with those numbers of the referrals, were any of those students, like that started in that 2017, do those numbers fluctuate of the total number of kids? Like, has that, were any of those kids like school choice or, you know, parents went to private schools? Or that's, I just meant like the starting class size number for the referral numbers or if any of that has, if there's any data that's correlated with the percentage that may have, you know, felt that if their kids were in that group, that if at that time before this testing was really in, that they pulled to a different type of education, whether it was private or school choice, would that be reflected in those numbers that could have, not saying it did, but could have led to those numbers being lower?
I don't know. If anything, they would be choosing to come here and not leave as a result of the work. Huh?
And I'm so sorry, I can't see anybody's face, but, so we work in a number of districts and the reduction in referral data is consistent with what we see in other districts as well. It typically drops by over 50%. You're at 56% of qualified students within the first three years. In Maine, and we service schools in Massachusetts, Maine and New Hampshire, in Maine, we don't have the same type of school choice options that you do. And so your data does align with schools that have similar reductions with not school choice options.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, does that help?
Yes.
Okay, good. So, and Carrie's price has dropped significantly because from last year, but the invoicing has been twice rather than three times. So usually she invoices three times through the school year. This year it's twice, so the amount seemed a little bit higher, but it's overall $10,000 less because she's not, she's going to come when she can, but she can't, and she's working Zooming and created 400 videos actually, very specific to the needs of each individual student within each class. You click and they're, I mean, the work has been amazing as far as that's concerned. She just had a Zoom meeting yesterday. She's had, she helped us through the summer when we did our boost with our group of kids in kindergarten. Anyone can go to her professional development, she never charges anything and she's available 24 hours a day, 7 days a week, whenever anybody needs her. So I think we're getting huge, huge services for very little money when you look at the big picture.
And that was, that was Mary's question. So first, I just want to back up and say thank you, Carrie, for being here tonight. We've heard so much about you for so many years, it's nice for us to meet you.
Thank you.
And so I'm just relaying the questions, you know, that Mary had because she is the one that brought that up, although I'm glad that it turned into this because this was really nice to be able to do this. So her question was about the expense and you already kind of addressed that with, you know, just there's a plan over the years that there will be a reduction, that there'll be a point where the teachers are trained. Is that true?
Yes, that was this slide.
Your timeline just...
Pretty much explains it.
Right, right. So with that being said though, there'll still be a need to have that resource available.
Possibly. And we're certainly going to do what's best for kids and how that works out. So we hope, we have some really savvy teachers that have taken this on and they're learning to be able to carefully identify by watching students what strategies they may need to help them through. But I call Carrie the intervention whisperer. She just sort of has an intuitive understanding of, I mean, even via text, somebody can text her saying he or she is doing this and they're acting like this and Carrie will respond, try doing this and then it's done and the child is fine. So I don't know, she just kind of has a gift. So we're very grateful that we were able to have her here in Wareham. It was sort of serendipitous that she landed here, but we're very lucky. So I don't want to say it will absolutely be done and we don't know. I think we just have to see how our kids are.
And it's obvious that you've all adjusted to this new way of teaching and so, you know, it might look a little bit different right now, but the services are still, and the resources are still there, like you said.
They need to be. Yeah, more so even, I had a teacher write a letter to all of you explaining that Carrie Thurston's PD was one of the top three, she's been here for 30 years, that she's ever been to, and that we need her now more than ever because of the situation. So I would hate to, you know, I would hate to lose her at this point. It would be, I think it would be detrimental to our students.
So the results have spoken for themselves. I mean, they really have. And I trust in you that you've got the clear before and after and that you've poured over the data before and you were wrestling with, you know, how to improve it. And you and I have discussed how you guys met and such, and that was interesting and serendipitous. And that, I don't know, where would we be if that hadn't happened? I mean, I mean, you try and you try and you try and then, you know, you have this whole different approach and it works. So you're wondering, you're hoping we can keep her, like why wouldn't we? I don't, I'm not understanding.
Well, continually being challenged, you know, last year with emails and, you know, there's just always a challenge and I'm kind of like, well, I don't understand the, I don't understand the challenge. We're saving kids' lives, we're changing their lives forever. And I think to myself, it's, it's nothing in the big picture really, it's a drop in the bucket. Programs that people purchase to fix this problem are hundreds of thousands of dollars and they change year after year after year. They run, they jump from one program to another program. Well, this program works, well, that program works, well, we used to do this and we used to do that and that was working. Well, nothing has, nothing has worked, to be honest, and parts of it work. So we take, we take the best of what we had and then add Carrie to the mix. And now we don't need to spend $600,000 on a new program. I don't want to spend six, we have what we need right now. We're good, we need some manipulives, we need some things like that, but we don't need to go there.
And under the current circumstances, like can she get in and come in?
She's Zooming.
Zooming.
And video, tons of, she's made her 400 videos actually.
Okay, yeah.
Hundreds of videos.
Okay.
Endlessly, tirelessly, I can't imagine. She hates looking at herself on screen, which is even worse. I can't imagine.
Yeah. And I've heard great things from you obviously, and I've heard great things from the teachers. Probably the biggest complaint is they'd rather have more of her, you know, really. Yeah.
Yep.
No, please don't take it as a, as a challenge. That's not, that's not how I see it. I know, I agree with Mike and with what you said, that the results speak for themselves.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Please note, this is really personal for us. We have three children. We're honored for people that, you know, we're really grateful when Dr. Schwam said, come, see if it can work. And the students you've put in front of us, many of them keep us up at night. We have three children of our own. One was very, is very neurologically compromised. And our goal is to not have any other family have to go through the process that we went through. So, you know, we take very seriously the commitment that we've made to your district to try and help students have a really positive learning experience and to have teachers no longer feel helpless when they get a challenge on or in front of them.
Okay, does anyone else have any questions?
I just really look forward to seeing this, since you've tracked this one particular cohort, seeing how their progress tracks past the elementary stage and the difference that this could potentially make in the upper grades. Do you have a, like a transition piece for those kids as they exit elementary and transition to middle and high school? Is there a, something that your program offers or that we're able to do, especially since we'll be following this one particular, you know, kind of experimental cohort? I say experiment because that's what started it, even though all the cohorts behind it have followed, but once they start getting into the upper grades to, I feel like that's sometimes where some kids get lost. So, you know, just it would be interesting to see their data as they get into the upper elementary, middle and high school to really see how the long-term effects of this program are going to be for them.
Well, and you, you've already implemented some programs at your upper levels that involve really significant critical thinking. The IV program is one of the strongest programs that's out there for critical thinking. Interestingly enough and just coincidentally, I'm an IV alum. I got mine in Nairobi, Kenya, 1986. But what happens is your learners are ready for deeper and more. And so far your primary school teachers have really risen to that challenge. You have some teachers who have been amazing in stretching kids and they're responsive and they're coming in higher than I've seen them. Last year, the most challenging thing we had to deal with was first grade teachers saying, I need second and third grade resources. I need to be teaching kids at second and third grade level, I haven't done that before. Those are good challenges to have. Those are good, easy challenges to help support. We do have schools we're working with all the way up through seventh and eighth grade. So we are ahead of where you are with that. And if at any time that's a place where we go, we'll be ready for you.
Great, thank you.
I just wanted to say, I think what they had, what Carrie had mentioned about our second graders, what we found today when we looked at the data, that we had no regression in a group of, what was it, 36 students that we, that you looked at? 35 students? That is simply incredible after what we've been through.
Can I show that for a quick second?
Sure.
I mean, it's just amazing to see, oh, I can't. Somebody has to let me, but if you can turn it so I can. When you see it, it's amazing to see, you know, they just kept following happily and we'll keep watching and, you know, because it's important to us that what we do has longevity. We don't ever want to be that thing that we did once because it was the flashy thing. We want it to have longevity because we know it's good for kids.
I don't, I don't own it anymore, but I think I have it.
Let me just share.
I think I have it, Carrie, the data. Didn't you send it to me?
Yep, here it comes. I'm going to resend it.
No, I have it.
Just the one sheet that shows the...
Yeah, the pretty one, right?
And what we did is we calculated the average level gain, but if you scroll down to the bottom, many of your children who were considered the highest need made level gains of four, five, six. I was in more of your families' homes over the spring. I had many of your teachers and actually family members reach out and say, why do you always ask our kids to categorize? And so those are great conversations and an opportunity to give families tools too.
So we would have much rather had them here because the sky's the limit then, but we didn't lose.
Which I'm guessing is not what you expected.
No. We haven't seen them since March. I mean, we lost a significant amount of learning time, incredible amount. And the one thing I could say, I was less afraid to, then, than I would have been in 2014 had this happened. Had this happened in 2014, I think I just would have been completely out of my mind because I would have felt like, oh no, what's going to happen to our children? But because they had at least had it since, till February, you know? I felt that because of the data I had collected prior, the prior year and saw that there hadn't been any loss, that they would possibly not lose so much. But I didn't anticipate that they would lose nothing.
Yeah, that's amazing. So Carrie, when you say that you were in the homes of the students, what does that mean?
So because my face was on, we immediately ran doing video instruction because we knew teachers were going to have so much going on. So it gave teachers an opportunity to have another person help with the instruction for students. And so for example, Cheryl Wood would frequently send me photos of students participating. And a lot of what we did in the spring, we put on YouTube because we have an access and equity issue. And so we know that most families have a smart TV in their home. If they have a TV and that connects YouTube, it doesn't tend to have as much difficulty with internet processes. And so you'd see a student participating in the dictation. And then there were a few occasions where those families, because my name is on things, went to the website, reached out and said, I had two families in particular email me and then I emailed them, we exchanged, and then one I actually said, might be easier to pick up the phone, it's a little bit more complicated. And we wound up giving the family something as simple as a ping pong table suggestion where they just play ping pong with their child, the midline tracking and eye tracking. And we really work hard to give people tools that they can be successful with. Most families are happy to participate in ping pong or basketball or stringing pasta on a string, you know, instead of something that feels like they're unsuccessful again. Many times, although not always, a third of struggling students come from college educated homes. But just as frequently, we're dealing with families where the school experience is complicated for them as well. And so we want to take that away and really breed success for everybody. So I didn't physically go to anybody's home.
No, 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 I didn't think that you did.
But I would.
I just think it's great.
I will get in the car and go anywhere.
Well, there are so many families that are overwhelmed by the home, schooling at home. And so to have just one more resource, and who would have known that playing ping pong or stringing pasta on a string relates to reading and other, and other skills, yeah. All right. All right, well, thank you.
Thank you so much Carrie for coming. We appreciate it.
Yes, it was really great.
Thank you.
It was really great to have you. Thank you, Dr. Schwam.
Thank you for having me. Wonderful evening and we'll look forward to continuing to do great things this year.
Okay, thank you.
Bye.
Bye-bye. The next item on the agenda is the school calendar, an amendment to the school calendar.
Yes. What you have in front of you merely shifts the in-service days from a Tuesday to a Wednesday. And the reason why we're recommending this to be adopted by the committee is we have the hybrid on a Monday and Tuesday. Wednesday is the remote day, so if we're able to make this switch, this would not interrupt our students coming on Tuesday. So I would ask the committee to please approve this change in this year's school calendar.
Does this mean that all the professional development will be delivered remotely?
Yes.
Because it's on a Wednesday?
We are right now.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? 4-0-0.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, the report of the superintendent.
Yes, I would ask for the committee to please vote approval for the payroll weeks and the bill warrants that are listed in the newsletter.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? 4-0-0.
Thank you. To move on, I would just remind everyone that the food distribution continues and it will continue throughout this year. We have five sites and I would encourage people to please go and pick up food. As students leave the schools, when they're here, if they're hybrid, they are given meals as they depart. You received tonight a list of the capital items that I met with the capital planning board today and we reviewed these items. I'd be happy to schedule a time and put it on the agenda if you would like to discuss them further. Since town meeting has been postponed, we're anticipating that there will be some capital money that will be given to the school that, we're hoping to receive that in December because we do have some projects that we need to address. The first one though, I will just quickly mention, is 200 and I believe it's 47, 49,000. It's for the fire alarm system and that's probably, it might be the first time that you've seen this on the Capitol. And what has happened, and this is at the high school, what has happened in the past several years, we've had more and more problems with it. It's now to the point, it's as old as the building, it's getting very difficult to find parts for repair. And this is really a safety issue. You know, at this point, we're still able to repair it, but there's going to come a time in the very near future that we will need to replace just because it cannot be repaired. So we made note of that and talked a little bit about it today.
Is this front page a summary of what's behind?
Yes, the front page is really a summary of what we just wanted to highlight for the Capitol. And then the back pages, the first is the high school and the third is the middle school. And then the very last page are projects that have been completed. There are, you know, this was asked today of me, you know, there's certainly some items on this sheet that do, that are not considered capital. To be considered capital, you have to reach the threshold of 25,000, I believe. Some of this is not. However, because of the way that we've had to work our LEA budget in the last several years, a lot of the items that we would have done ourselves, like minor repairs, that money has had to come out and has gone into, if there's free cash for, when we, when we've gotten it from the town meeting. And so some of these, we just haven't had an opportunity to address because there simply has not been money. And we just needed to make note that these are items that we're aware of and that if we have enough money, we fully intend to address them.
So has this been formally submitted to the capital planning board?
Yes.
Okay.
If we, if I looked at this compared to the last version of this list, is it true that there would be much less HVAC on this one than on the previous one?
Yes, that's true. We've been diligently working on HVAC since last May. We continue to do so. We're almost at the completion of the HVAC. We have one major project that is set to go at the high school, but we're waiting for the parts to come in. And we also have to have a crane come to lift it up onto the roof.
Okay. So part of the, the...
So part of the HVAC funding was through COVID relief funding, am I correct? So will that be reflected? Is that in this amount on this capital plan is in addition to that? Or is that the total, not including any of the COVID relief for the HVAC systems?
The HVAC that's reflected here would really shift into then chillers. Because our chillers, the air conditioning parts, that's really not connected to the essential HVAC. That's very nice to have, but it does not affect the health and well-being of the air quality. If we would have this money awarded, then we could shift in to replace some of the chillers in the, on the high school and on the middle school that need to be replaced.
Thank you.
When was the last time you were asked to appear before capital planning?
Well, I was asked this afternoon to appear at 1:00 today.
Prior to that, though?
Oh, last year.
Last year, okay.
Probably around town meeting time.
Yeah. I just, I just never hear any of the work they do. I never hear of anything from capital planning.
They're a quiet group.
Since Alan left.
Yeah. Thank you.
Just while we're on the superintendent's report, in one of the, you know, staff things that we get, and I noticed there was a position, I may have asked this before in the past, a PR liaison position, one per school, what is that?
PR?
Yeah.
They just collect all the good news that's happening in the schools. They put it on Facebook pages. They help, they just help publicize a lot of the great things. It's a stipend position. Anybody in the school can apply for it. And we've had the same people doing it now for several years.
Oh, did you say it's a stipend position?
It's a stipend position.
You know, now, totally, it may be related or not. I can't believe I forgot to mention this during Good News. We got the high school yearbook for our son, who's at college right now. What an incredible job they did. I mean, it was really, really good. I mean, what they had to work with. And it was kind of cool because you have a yearbook, and it's got graduation stuff in it. You don't believe, don't have that. So they were able to put all that stuff in. They did an incredible job. Sorry, I forgot to mention that during Good News. And just while we're on the superintendent report, too, I had asked for the retention report. Is that in the works?
We're working on that. We haven't finalized it.
Okay. Soon?
Yeah.
Soon?
Soon.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Those PR positions, that's nothing new, right? That's just something that you post every year.
Yeah, I just, yeah, that's what I thought. I might have asked, I might have asked before, but it was like, it just stuck out. Like, what is that? But I was glad to hear it was a stipend position. It's not like somebody dedicated to doing this, you know?
Moving on, the October is National Principals Month, so we certainly have four principals that we should celebrate. Their good work. We're very fortunate that they are the leaders of our building because they, they're just doing an amazing job. I also am extremely excited to announce this. Lieutenant Colonel Keegan Cahill is an honor student and a JROTC Cadet Battalion Commander. Keegan was recently awarded the prestigious JROTC Legion of Valor with Bronze Cross for achievement for his countless hours of service excellence in academics. And he is just an amazing leader, I'm told. The Army limits one award per 4,000 cadets. This year, Keegan was one of 53 JROTC cadets from over 3,390 programs with over 553,000 cadets. He was presented this medal. On October 20th, at 2:30, he will receive the medal in a ceremony at the high school. So this is simply amazing. This is the first time that anyone can remember a JROTC student in Wareham receiving this prestigious award. And so congratulations to Keegan Cahill, along with the JROTC instructors.
That's amazing.
Thank you for sharing that. I wish we could invite him here to recognize him.
Why can't we?
Well, we could. I mean, I was thinking, we can't go there. But yes, we could invite him here.
And so finally, as, as you know, we are completing our second week with students. It's been simply amazing. It's so nice having our students back in. We're, it seems like we're in that rhythm now with, with students. And while we're watching our numbers very closely, we've been extremely fortunate. And every day, I just breathe a sigh of relief when I can close that day out, and we don't have to have a positive case. But as Mr. Bruggeoli mentioned, we do have a COVID dashboard now on our website, so that will be updated daily if we have any cases and how we will handle it.
So with this, with the state having been moved into the red and areas around being in the red, do you foresee Dussie or the governor stepping in and choosing or asking that we go back to a remote model? Is that something that's being watched, or is that hopefully not on the horizon?
Well, funny that you ask that. Today, we had a Zoom meeting with the commissioner, and actually, they're pushing schools to go back even more. And because what we're seeing statewide, while there are some students and some staff, the, the rise in the COVID numbers are not really, at this point, affecting schools. And they feel like perhaps some areas should be a little bit more aggressive in getting their students back in. So that has not been mentioned in anything. It's really the opposite.
Thank you.
Just forgot to ask about the food distribution. We're down a calf, aren't we? We only do only two kitchens this year or something?
Two what?
Two kitchens, two schools that are doing food?
Right, we were. And now that we are in hybrid, we brought the third kitchen back. And we had some people that we had furloughed, either voluntary, or there were several that were not voluntary. They've all been recalled, and so we're back up and running again.
Which, which calf wasn't in use?
The Deacon's calf was not in use. And we were fulfilling all the needs out of the two cafeterias. If for some reason, we would have to go remote again, we would probably need to look at closing one of the kitchens, just because we can, we can make everything work out of two.
And so, so interestingly, any savings that might have been had from the furloughed employees probably stays in the revolver over there, right?
It stays in the food service.
Yeah.
Yeah. We don't really see any of that through the LEA. But I will tell you that they've been extremely generous in supporting different projects around the cafeterias with their, with the money that's, they've generated.
Yeah.
And the food distribution with the buses, that's all worked out? You were able to get the food where it needs to be?
Yes, we are. I would say that if anybody has an interest in being a bus driver, this would be a wonderful time to apply. We would love to have you because everyone is scrounging around for bus drivers. We desperately need them.
Okay, thank you. So next on the agenda is discussion of superintendent evaluation. The only reason I put this on here is because we had a discussion last time, and I felt like we, there wasn't, it needed more clarification by the end of that discussion. So there won't be a vote tonight. I know it says possible vote, but there won't be a vote. But I did share with you all a bullet tonight, shared it by email, but I shared, I left it for everybody tonight. And I did clarify what we were talking about last time as far as timeframe and evaluating during COVID, you know, after March. And what I was told today by Mr. Hardy, who did give us our training, is that what he, what he expressed to us, the meaning of that was that there was to be no penalizing a superintendent for goals that weren't met because of COVID, which is pretty much what we were saying last time. So I just wanted to make that very clear, that it isn't that, you know, on March 13th, anything that happened after that is not to be addressed in an evaluation, that it just, if there is a goal, and I'm not referencing the goal specifically, but if there is a goal, again, that couldn't be met because of that, then there would have to be some, some adjustment for that. So I just wanted to put it on here tonight to, to make that clear and to give everyone the opportunity to ask questions, because there really isn't another forum for that opportunity. So this was, this was the only way to do that. So does anyone have any questions? This is exactly what I emailed to you a couple of weeks ago, too. So is there any, any other questions? Nope, so everybody's good? Okay, good. Thank you. So we can move on to the report of the school committee and mostly the report from the Policy Review Committee.
All right. So the Policy Review Committee met October 7th. We had, we had a great meeting. It was a great group. I thank Ms. Wixton for getting the minutes so quickly and in order, just like this really helps me. I'll just mention who was there, you know, myself, Mr. Bruggeoli, Michelle Letourneau, Cheryl McGrath, Kelly Powers, Tracy Cote, Joan Siemens, Beth Jefrida, Bonna La Sorsa, Sandy Wingo. Bonna La Sorsa's in there twice. It's okay. And Nicole Avila, also Dr. Shaverhood and Ms. Wixton. So, so I guess we'll just go in order.
Dr. Schwam was there, too.
Who?
Dr. Schwam was there, too.
Yeah, Dr. Schwam was. So just a few corrections. Of course she was there. Jeez. All right. So anyway, so I'll just, I'll just go in order. So the first one, we took up, a lot of these were, you know, just voted as is. I mean, certainly the committee at this point can suggest any more changes or the recommendations of the Policy Review Committee. Closing one school building, there was just a typo that, at the beginning, that you probably see it right on there. Yep. And then we moved the paragraph as well. I think that was about it, right? Yeah. So if, you know, if you, if you want to take a motion to approve as is, or if you want to discuss any further changes?
Okay. So we'll take a motion to approve with the changes.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. And now, is there any questions, any discussion about that policy?
No.
Okay. So we'll vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Four zero zero.
One, two, emergency closings. This, this one, we, we motioned and voted to accept the policy as is.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
I just have a question. On the one that you, that was in the packet, it looks like there was an addition to add number five for other extenuating circumstances?
Was that the emergency closings?
Yep, that was under emergency closings.
How did I? Oh, I flipped the page.
Because it mentions, you know, weather conditions, different things like that.
No, you're right, you're right.
But that was the only, I just wanted to make sure that wasn't as is, it was that change?
I had flipped the page. I was on a different, I was on a, yeah, I'm sorry. Thank you. Yeah. So Dr. Shaverhood, yeah, she had, she had recommended adding, or other extenuating circumstances on this particular policy. And, and, and so we had some back and forth at the time. I think it was, it was, it was voted to accept that as it, you know, with that change. But I, I said, I think there'll probably be some discussion at the committee level. I mean, that's, that's pretty open-ended, I thought.
Well, it is 2020.
I think that covers things like COVID without being specific to saying, putting the word pandemic in a policy because that is an extenuating circumstance.
Yeah, that was kind of the point.
Say if something else came up, like a flood or something, it would still be covered under an extenuating circumstance. So I think having it be a blanket statement or a blanket term, I think that works in that instance.
Okay.
Right.
Okay.
Well, we're leaving it in the hands of the superintendent.
Okay.
And giving her that ability.
Yeah. So I guess we'll take a motion to accept the recommendation of the Policy Review Committee.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Four zero zero.
Now, this is emergency health procedures.
Are you not going in order from the, the agenda?
Online instruction is next.
Oh, shoot. Yeah, there's two different orders.
That's all right, whichever.
I'd like to, yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to go in the order, in the order of this.
So what was that one, health procedures?
This is emergency health procedures. So that would be... One, two, three, four, five, six, seven down? Do you see it?
Six.
Okay. So that one was, was made to, we voted to accept the policy as is.
So the highlighted areas on that are, are changes, or are they not changes? Because it looks like the highlighted color is slightly different than the other, so I'm just...
So that, I think that might be...
For clarifying, because it looks like the only thing is the date, and then an exception for clinical guidelines regarding lice.
Yeah, but the, the comments look like they're from Ms. Ruiz.
Which says it was voted, that there was no change voted November 14th, 2019. So is it voted to just keep that as is, or were those highlighted areas where it has a date and the clinical guidelines for school nurses, is that a change, or is that...
I, I think that the question was, it was 2013, I believe, is the highlighted area. Is that correct?
Yes.
And the question that was asked was, is that the latest, the most recent manual or book? And the answer is yes. And so it would remain the same.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Can I just ask a question? Why is, why is head lice addressed here? Because it's an exception to that?
Yes. And that, that, if you remember when we did this, not this time, but the time before, we brought the nurses in, and the nurses felt very strongly about making an exception with the head lice. We sent this policy back to the nurses to review prior to bringing it to policy. They reviewed it. They also reviewed it with the school physician, and their recommendation was to leave it.
Okay. Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Four zero zero.
Okay, so the next one on, the next one on the minutes is bus transportation. So that's the next one after emergency health procedures.
It looks like there's no change?
So, yeah, we voted to accept the policy as is.
Okay. That date, okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. So that date, May 31st, obviously you extend that date.
We do.
Or every year, yeah.
Yeah. And we talked about, this year was certainly an exception. In a normal year, we would like to stick to that date. Usually, you know, we have to extend it by a little bit.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Four zero zero.
Okay. Online instruction, third one down. So that one, that one, we made a couple of changes. Grade eight through 12 changed to pre-K to 12, and the word secondary removed. changes. Grade eight through 12 changed to pre-K to 12, and the word secondary removed. So take a motion to approve the recommendation of the Policy Review Committee?
So moved.
I, I just had a question. So you changed it, obviously, from high school to all grades. How would this apply to a fourth grader? How would this policy apply to them?
Do you want me to answer?
Sure.
Okay. When we were looking at this, because right now, we're doing online instruction, and at the time, I think it was maybe focused more towards secondary because of edgenuity and other online courses. But now that we're in a different situation, we are offering remote, and we are interacting and teaching courses in that manner. So by expanding the policy, it just included what we're presently doing.
Okay. So I guess I'm just thinking of it as an online course, like a, in a high school, because that's where it's always been, you know, in the high school model. So, and sometimes in high school, kids might end up in those classes for different reasons, but that's not going to happen. But that's why I'm asking the question. Yes.
I think at this point, we don't know what could happen, and we would like to be able to offer remote learning to all students pre-K through 12 in the future, if that be the direction that some kids need to go. We don't want to lock them out of Wareham Public Schools.
Well, I mean, you're already offering them remote instructions.
Right, but this, this says we...
I think this means it will continue.
Will continue.
Right?
Yes. That it's, that it will, it has now opened the door for a lot of possibility that we didn't have before.
Right. Well, I guess, I guess I'm just stuck on what it used to be. And, you know, an online course is an online course. You're in an online course, you're not in a class, well, you're still in a classroom, but you're not in a classroom with a teacher in front of you. You're in an online course.
It all looks like, it all looks like that now.
Yeah.
Everywhere we go, so.
Could we change the word courses to curriculum? Would that make it more encompassing instead of courses? Would that make it make more sense, Joyce?
But it would change the whole policy. And...
Not really, because it would only, it's just that, then it's not core, it's not singled out as one particular core. I know what you're saying, like if you are doing an online college course and you're just doing English for one term, whereas this would be, the whole curriculum is going to be made available online for grades pre-K through 12.
Well, I mean, that's not something I would ask to be done, because that's almost a different, a different matter.
Okay.
But thank you. Okay, so we'll take a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, four zero zero.
So then we have attendance, grades eight through 12. And we had a lot of discussion on this, and ultimately decided to table it for the next meeting. But if, if there's anything that, that you'd like to discuss at this time that I can bring back to the Policy Review Committee, you know, to, to bring, express your thoughts on that, too, that'd be fine.
What were the questions?
Well, it was, it was, it's a, it's a pretty big policy, and they were going back and forth about, I can just, I can just...
Student attendance, mine is really short.
Huh? No, no. The attendance grade, this one here?
Grade eight.
Well, there's two.
Oh, I'm just looking at student attendance.
Yeah, this one's attendance grade eight.
Student attendance, eight through 12, okay.
Yeah.
What was about credit pending was part of the discussion, the second one?
So this is just the high school?
Yes.
Okay.
And we were going to ask Mr. Palladino to be involved in our next discussion of the Policy Review Committee to give a justification for some of the...
Okay.
Practices.
Okay, good.
So we don't need, you know, any motion or anything on that one. Next one I have here is student attendance. So that one, yeah, Dr. Schwam, you know, suggested we remove the, the, the two words by semester in the last sentence, and then we, we voted on that, to accept that.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, four zero zero.
Empowering digital use, voted to accept as is.
Well, this was just amended in January.
Last year?
Yeah, 2019.
Yeah. Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, four zero zero.
Visitors, visitors to school buildings.
I don't have, I don't think that's on the...
It's under security.
Under security. Okay, thank you.
Sorry, yeah. So that one, so it was suggested that we, well, it's probably right in your thing, right? Emergency closings. Yeah, that we do, that we add, under, under certain conditions, the policy will defer to establish procedures. And then it was voted to approve with that change.
What, I don't even, what does that mean?
Dr. Schwam had recommended it.
I did?
I think we were trying to make, make some flexibility with those conditions, particularly now that we're facing, for visitors coming in, that we had, that there were protocols that would be, that we're practicing, right, or that we're continuing to practice now. And we'd like to be able to, if, in fact, we need to establish that, that it defers to those protocols, depending upon what's going on, right? So we didn't want to necessarily make it an absolute policy, but would prefer to have protocols and procedures in place that the policy would guide people to, that they have to follow.
We had also discussed at that point, is, and I know later on in the agenda, we're going to talk about policy of COVID-related issues, that that would also kind of cover what we were trying to get across in this, if that were adopted.
Okay. Have you had any, any challenges to your procedure of, or no visitors?
No.
Oh, good. Good. Okay. Is there a motion to approve this as changed?
So moved.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, four zero zero.
Emergency plans, we voted to accept the policy as is.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, four zero zero. Wow, you really covered a lot of policies.
Yeah, I was really surprised. I think it went an hour and five minutes. So no, no 13-minute Policy Review Committee meeting. So it was a great, it was a great group, and yeah, and people really came prepared, I thought. So...
So, as was mentioned, let's skip over the elementary school update and go to the policy on COVID-related issues. So we do have that policy. We just have to adjust it to our policies that we have in place. It lists several policies. So I'm sure, our next meeting isn't for three weeks, so I'm sure by the next meeting, we could have that ready to be approved by the school committee.
So are we, to, to table that till the next meeting?
Yeah, it was just a discussion. We don't, we don't have to table it. We just, it'll, it'll come up again at the next meeting.
Yeah, and just, just so you know, this is actually, what we're doing, we're following a policy that Joyce had actually implemented, and we all voted on it. But basically, when there's a new policy, it gets, it gets presented to the school committee for one meeting, and just to discuss it, and then we'll have a vote at the next meeting.
Okay.
Right. So it will be two, yeah, so the meeting after next is when we would vote on it.
And basically, all those policies, just give this, we empower the superintendent to have a little more flexibility in light of COVID pandemic.
Right. So instead of changing all of those policies, it'll be one blanket policy. It makes sense. We just have to get it ready for, for us. Okay. So, sorry, are you, is that it for policy review? When is your next policy review coming?
Oh, shoot. November 4th?
Fourth.
November 4th. Yep. Oh, thank, yeah, yeah, next meeting, November 4th.
Okay. All right. Update on the Elementary School Building Committee. There really isn't an update. As was mentioned, we, we had a tour, which was great. There is a lot going on up there. The webcams are active, and they're on the website, so anybody can go on anytime. It's live. It's amazing to be able to see what, what's going on up there. And the next meeting of the full School Building Committee is on Monday, November 2nd. So that's a busy week. Next on the agenda is the resolutions, the mask resolutions. So I guess, so April is ready for us to vote on them. My question is, has everyone had a chance to take a look at them? And, okay. Mike, yes?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Well, I just, you know, there's a lot to them. So if you hadn't, then we could, we could have figured out.
If I found my other one.
Could I explain, so that Kevin knows how, like, the, the breakdown, in case you were reading it and you didn't. So when you go to the, the delegate, the Resolution Committee, each section is broken down. So should one of these resolutions, we agree with part of it, or part of it works for our district, but we wanted to vote yes only if it, if they modify or amend a certain part of it. Sometimes they also split some of the resolutions, and they end up being two separate resolutions at the meeting. So if there is a part of it that makes sense, or you have questions at, I can write no, I keep notes of them. So when I am representing us, I'll say, you know, we don't agree to this part of it, or we'd like to see this amended, or this doesn't reflect our district. So we can either vote on the whole as the resolution. We can vote yes for part of the resolution, in case it does get split up. Or we can vote, you know, so yes or no, depending on where we stand as a district, if that makes sense.
So what I've asked April to do tonight is just read the, the last part, instead of the whole thing. So if you have something you want to address in the body of it, you can bring that up. But she's not going to read the whole one. She's just going to read after, therefore be it resolved, after that part. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So Resolution 1 is regarding MCAS and high-stakes testing. This was submitted by the MASC Board of Directors. And the resolution, therefore be it resolved, that MASC rejects the calls for the students of 2022 who missed their 10th grade MCAS testing to be required to make it up during the 2021 school year or ever. We demand those students be held harmless for not taking the MCAS, and that their graduation requirements shall be determined by locally controlled voices of the school committee and the school administration within the remaining graduation requirements of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Additionally, we reiterate our call for a moratorium on all high-stakes testing for the 2020, 2021 school year, so all students can benefit from their time being focused on direct instruction. And we urge the legislature to enact a moratorium on high-stakes testing of three years.
Okay, so, go ahead.
And just, just to remind people, you know, I mean, that there's a lot here. We don't necessarily have to vote on all of them. I mean, then if it is not a motion or a second, it just, we're just silent on it.
Okay. Yep. Okay. So does anyone want to comment on any of the parts that April did not read? So I will take a motion to, to approve.
Well, to vote either yes or to vote no.
Well, just, yeah, just do a motion to, a motion to approve. And if it gets a second, then we can discuss it further.
Okay. So I'll take a motion to approve?
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, so we'll, we could have discussion, and then the vote will be a vote on whether to say yes, right?
Correct. Whether we're going to vote for this. So as the designee, I am the voice of our district at the Resolutions Committee Conference. So it would be whatever we feel as a body, as a whole, would be what I would present, our vote, either yes, no, or abstain.
Okay. So is there any discussion on this one?
Yeah, sure. So, so I like the part where it says, you know, we demand those students be held harmless for not taking MCAS, you know, that they don't, that they don't have to worry about it. I mean, that was, that was a big, what I call a big asterisk year, you know? But then they, I agree with that. But then they, they finish off saying that they reiterate their call for a moratorium on all high-stakes testing for the 2021 school year, so all students can benefit from their time being focused on direct instruction. And we, I, I don't think I agree with that. I, I think, I think it's actually frankly, I mean, it's, I think it's important. I mean, maybe, maybe hold them harmless, you know, this year as well, because that's for this year, right, the 20? No, no. Yeah, right, right. I, I, I think, I think it's important to know how, how, if and how much we're not learning, you know what I mean? Just from, even from a national point of view, just to know, like, where we are. I don't mind holding people harmless, but I'd like to know where we are.
The only issue is, if you hold them harmless, I'm not sure how, what kind of results you're going to get from the student body overall. I agree with holding them harmless. I actually agree with this resolution, but I don't know how valid the results would be. I understand the importance of, like, what is the last year of, is it a lost year of learning based on MCAS data or not, but I don't know if it's worth it.
I, I think part of this goes to the, you know, the, kind of the debate whether or not MCAS should exist, or for some districts that, you know, in some families, they feel like they're teaching to the test, as if not necessarily that it's our district-specific. But I think because this was presented by the MSC, MASC Board of Directors for the Commonwealth as a whole, I think that it's more reflective of where a lot of other districts in the state feel. Obviously, we know that we are a very data-driven district, as is evidenced by a lot of the, the stuff that Andrea presents. And I think that that more goes to whether or not missing out, I think, maybe on this one particular year, that's going to carry these students going forward for the next three, because I think of the unknowns of COVID. But I don't know if that extends beyond, or if that goes hand in hand with people who are lobbying to kind of eradicate MCAS as an indicator in general. So I don't know if they're giving the three-year on this resolution to give time for that to be resolved one way or the other on a legislative level, as opposed to whether or not this is, you know, kind of more specific data for this cohort of kids that are most affected because of COVID.
Well, it's not just this cohort. I mean, they're looking for three years. I mean, three whole years of no MCAS testing.
And again, we can say, if, as a whole, if this part is amended, and if people bring that up at the, the Resolution Committee, that we can vote, we can say we would vote yes if this was amended. So I take that into consideration, that it would be, you know, if our body considers it a no, unless that particular wording is kind of redone at the Resolutions Meeting. And then, other than that, it could be a yes, or it could be just a no across the board, whatever, we vote the majority.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second?
We do.
Yes.
For it as...
As is.
As stated, yes.
So let's vote on that, and then we'll go from there.
Okay.
So all those in favor of approving it as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. So, that carries, but certainly you can take into account what?
Yep, and I do, and, yeah, and it is usually up for discussion. It's actually the, the Resolutions Committee meetings, it's, it's the most fascinating, and I, I think it's exciting. So it's, it's kind of nice to see how things start off with one idea and can get broken off and amended and kind of reworded, and hearing the input of different districts around the state to kind of come together to make these happen. So I, I absolutely love being a part of this, so.
Okay, so Resolution Two, COVID-19.
Yep, Resolution Number Two, COVID-19 State Funding. Again, this was submitted by the MAS C Board of Directors. And therefore be it resolved that the state must guarantee every school district full reimbursement for whatever COVID-19 expenses are required to follow state mandates. We must ensure a statewide school reopening that is safe, responsible, and equitable. There can be no unfunded mandates for COVID-19.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I think this falls in line with where we had signed, you know, the petition earlier as a, as a committee. And I believe most of the other committees in the district had signed similar, if not all of them. Just stating that it would be unreasonable for the state to put mandates on us that we would not financially be able to put forth unless they gave us the support to do so.
Okay, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, four zero zero.
So on Resolution Three, there are a couple of the smaller pieces of it that I do want to incorporate when reading it, and only because it is district-specific, if that's okay.
Okay.
So, the School Committee Anti-Racism Resolution, again, this is put forth by the MAS C Board of Directors. Whereas it is the responsibility that every district provide to the district staff, including school committee members, annual professional development on diversity, equity, and inclusion. And whereas every district will commit to recruiting and retaining a diverse and culturally responsive teaching workforce. And whereas every district will examine their policies for institutional and systemic racialized practices and implement change with sustainable policies that are evidence-based. And whereas every district will incorporate into their curriculum the history of racial oppression and works by Black authors and works from diverse perspectives. Therefore be it resolved that all school districts in the Commonwealth should guarantee that racist practices are eradicated and diversity, equity, and inclusion is embedded and practiced for our students, families, faculty, and staff. School committee members should ensure that our school culture and that of every district in the Commonwealth is anti-racist and that acknowledges that all lives cannot matter until Black Lives Matter.
Okay, so is there a motion to approve this as-is, or with any changes?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I, I feel like our district already is above and beyond in this, because we have the, I, I call it a luxury of having such a diverse population in our town. I would like to think that we are very inclusive in our education. I can't say for sure 100% because I've never looked specifically at whether specific authors are of, of color or of other ethnicities in regards to the curriculum. But I don't think that it is a, a terrible thing to be, is to be inclusive and, and kind and kind of, I, I like the fact that our town primarily sees no color, so.
I know, I agree.
Yeah, that's how I felt as I was reading that, it was like where him wrote it, you know, so.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, four zero zero.
Okay, Resolution Four is lowering the voting age for municipal elections, and this was submitted again by the MAS C Board of Directors. And, therefore be it resolved that the sponsors call upon the Massachusetts Legislature to pass the Empower Act and take other means necessary to allow cities and towns to establish a minimum voting age of 16 years for municipal elections. And part of that, where they explain that, it says, whereas studies conducted in places with a voting age of 16 have demonstrated that when partnered with a strong civics education, a lowered voting age results in higher overall civic engagement and voter turnout, and higher propensity to develop a lifelong voting habit.
Is there a motion to approve it as-is?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I don't know, I've gone back and forth on this one in my head.
No, me too, I, I'm, I'm actually not in favor of this one.
I think it depends on the 16-year-old. Like, my son, I would have full, you know, full faith, or a child like Indiana Troup, who's already very civically-minded, already very involved in the school. Or like Emily being, I don't know if you're 18 yet, I think you might not be, but, you know, having it lowered for those kids that are engaged and are interested in how a local town election works and getting them excited to be a part of the change that affects them the most, I think, is a, a great opportunity. I know that attending town meetings, the majority of people who attend are senior citizens, and that there is a strong...
Wait, I go to town meetings.
No, I said, for the most part, I go to town meeting too, but I mean, that if you look statistically at, at the people that show up from a, you know, AARP standpoint, it's, it is, you don't see a lot of that younger generation. There aren't a lot of recent graduates or kids that had been excited about government. And even when we had done the MAS C Day on the Hill, we had the AP Government Students come with us, and there were five kids in that class at the time. So, I think possibly giving them the opportunity at 16, where they are able, and part of that was, they said that at 16 in Massachusetts, they're able to consent to sexual intercourse, obtain a learner's permit, driver's license, get married with parental consent, work a full-time job, and pay taxes, and be tried as an adult in the court of law. So that's what they're basing, I think, the age of 16 on. But I don't see any problem in engaging those, because it, it's not going to force them to, but it will give those that are interested the opportunity to get excited to participate in town government and hopefully carry that through, so that when this generation that's currently attending town meeting is, is dwindled, we will have a new set of people that are excited to help out in their town and make it what they hope it to be for their children.
So, well, I would, I take the lack of a second as a, as a non-approval, but feel free to share your opinion.
Oh, absolutely, but for our body, we will vote no for the where-him, yes, okay.
Actually, no, you will, you will be silent, we didn't, we didn't vote on it, so you just be silent.
Okay. So abstain. Well, after the discussion, do we want to vote no on it, or do we just want to abstain?
Well, no, we did, we, we didn't take a vote, so.
No, I know, but I'm asking if we want to take a vote to vote no.
No.
We made a motion to accept as-is, do we want to make a motion to accept it amended, or to, to vote no?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, just, just silent.
Yep, okay, just clarifying. So Resolution Number Five, supporting increased federal support and stimulus funding for public K through 12 education, again submitted by the MAS C Board of Directors. And that one reads, therefore be it resolved that MAS C align with state superintendents of schools and urge the Massachusetts Congressional Delegation and state legislators to advocate for and approve additional education funding for our nation's public schools through the enactment of progressive tax legislation.
I was all on board until the last.
Well, and there's quite, if you read the whereas, it kind of, all of those kind of go to where it sums up. So if, if any of those help to explain, or?
What progressive tax legislation is?
Where, yeah, where, what it comes under. I think it may be mentioned part of it in the paragraph where it says, whereas federal legislation has been approved to provide urgently needed funding to underwrite the recovery of the American economy and to support critical public programs, including public education with such examples as American Recovery, Recovery and Reinvestment Act of 2009, additional funding for the Education Jobs Fund to help school districts retain existing employees, recall former employees and hire new ones, and the recent Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Cares Act, and other measures to stabilize public education and other public programs.
Okay, is there a motion to approve as-is or with any changes?
So moved.
Second.
As-is?
As-is.
Okay, any other discussion?
Yeah, just, I mean, I, I'm with you in the sense like, like, I read all that, and what does it mean by, you know, enactment of progressive tax legislation, that, that just my taxes are going to go up?
Yes.
I, I, I mean, there's plenty of other places to take it from, you know? And I agree with everything, yeah, yeah, we, we need more money, but I, I think we're paying.
Right, right up until the last bit there, I was okay with it, so.
I, I can, you know, we can have a whole meeting on where we could take that money from, you know, so.
Alright, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye. Opposed.
Okay, so we abstain.
No, no, yeah, no, no, you're right, it was a tie, it was a tie, so it's, we're silent.
Yep. Okay, so, Resolution... Oh, where did it go? I think Resolution Number Six is missing. Oh, no, it's, I'm just sorry, I skipped it, okay. Resolution Number Six is retention of Medicaid revenue, again submitted by the MAS C Board of Directors. And that reads, therefore be it resolved that MAS C urges the General Court to require that 100% of Medicaid reimbursements to cities and towns be provided in full amount to the public schools of each municipality through a school district revolving account to underwrite the cost of providing an adequate education.
So move for discussion?
Second.
Dr. Shaver Hood, how much is reimbursed now?
It's gone down over the years. I think we just sent in a quarter and it was about 23,000, I believe, so, you know.
So you won't get that full amount back?
We do not get any of that back.
Oh.
It goes to the town, we do not see it.
So that, that was my question, that my little note is, how is that different from now? So that, and, and I think this was like one of Mr. Swett's things that really, he got hung up on. So, the Medicaid reimbursement, like, we get it for our teachers, right? Like, the, the staff in the town, like, account for that.
Right, so, they look for a moment in time, and then they ask the people, like OT, PT, counselors, different employees, what they're doing at that time, it gets recorded, and you get a reimbursement based on that. Town people are not involved in it, it's just school people.
But, but, but those funds go to the town?
Yes, you are correct, they go to the town, we get the bill to pay for it, because we go through a billing, a medical billing agency that runs the report for us, but we do not get the.
But it sounds like this would be forced to go to the schools.
Yes.
I'm a big fan of that.
Agreed.
So, so, so I'm, I'm, I'm really happy about that.
It used to.
Like, how long ago?
A long ti, a long time ago, and then they changed it.
Yeah, so, so, that's what I thought I was trying to accomplish, and I'm happy with that, real happy with that.
Alright, well, let's take a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, four zero zero.
Okay, Resolution Number Seven, attempts by U.S. Department of Education to direct funding to private schools, submitted by the MAS C Board of Directors. And it reads, therefore be it resolved that MAS C petition the Attorney General of Massachusetts to review and recommend to the Executive Office of Education and the Massachusetts Department of Elementary Education to review the formal language of such statutes that determine the distribution of federal funds to benefit economically disadvantaged students, and further that the Attorney General provide legal guidance to state agencies in Massachusetts to implement such formulas based on the actual language and legislative intent of the statute should be that in variance with any advisory issued by the United States Secretary of Education.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
So, does it really do anything?
So, if you read the first paragraph where it says, a recent advisory that was issued by the United States Secretary of Education has inappropriately interpreted language in the recent enacted COVID-19 relief legislation to benefit private schools disproportionately in the distribution of federal funding for economically disadvantaged students.
Hmm, okay.
And then I believe it goes on about the, the formula for Title I and other provisions.
Yeah, it's just like, like, looking for legal guidance and, you know, review this, and I don't know what it really does, if.
I, I think it just changes the wording where they have, or they're petitioning to change the wording of the inclusion of private schools when it comes to the, the specific funding.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, four zero zero.
Okay, and so Resolution Eight is membership of a school committee member on the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education, and this was submitted by the MAS C Board of Directors. Therefore be it resolved that MAS C submit to the General Court proposed legislation that MGL Chapter 15, Section 1E be revised as follows. Section 1E, there shall be in the department a board of, of... There shall be in the department a Board of Elementary and Secondary Education in this chapter called the Board, which shall consist of the Chairman of the Student Advisory Council, established under this section, the Secretary of Education in this chapter called the Secretary or her designee, and nine members appointed by the Governor. The nine members appointed by the Governor shall consist of one representative of a labor organization selected by the Governor from a list of three nominees provided by the Massachusetts State Labor Council, AFL-CIO, one representative of a business or industry selected by the Governor with a demonstrated commitment to education, one representative of a, of parents of schoolchildren selected by the Governor from a list of three nominees provided by the Massachusetts Parent Teachers Association, and the amended one representative from a school committee from a list of three nominees provided by the MAS C and five additional members.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, four zero zero.
Okay, so Resolution Nine is providing equity for sexual orientation LGBTQ+ students, teachers, and staff. And it reads, therefore be it resolved that MAS C file legislation and petition our federal legislative delegation to also file legislation which would have the effect of adding sexual orientation and gender identity to the list of protected classes in order to provide equity and support our LGBTQ+ students, teachers, and staff, and petition our legislative delegation.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, did we, need a motion?
Oh, sorry.
A motion to approve, sorry.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, now, any discussion?
Yeah, just, how is that different than today, like?
I think it's just verbiage, because it says that it's to, to file the legislation. So I don't know that all of everything is included in the current legislation. It may only be too specific, it may only, you know, LGBT, but it may not have the Q plus. So I think it's to make it more encompassing and more inclusive of all sexual identity and gender identity and sexual orientations.
Well, the way I understood it was that, that's true in the state of Massachusetts, but not federally. So this is to petition the federal legislative.
Yes.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, four zero zero.
Okay, and the final resolution would be Resolution Ten, relative to the monitoring of attendance of students during the pandemic, and this was submitted by the. and this was submitted by the MASC Board of Directors. And that reads, therefore, be it resolved that MASC advocate for legislation and regulation that protect the rights of parents to withhold their children from school for reasons of their health status or risk, and further, that the MASC advocate for regulations that hold districts accountable for the attendance of students who provide appropriate exemptions for students who experience or require extended absences from school due to health-related issues or concerns due to the COVID-19 pandemic. And further, that MASC petition the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education to waive all accountability requirements regarding attendance for the 2020-21 school year, and that such regulations exempt districts from sanctioned status on the basis of attendance when such absences are related to a public health crisis, including COVID-19.
So move for discussion?
So moved.
Second?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, I, I'd just like to get Dr. Shaver Hood's, um, opinion on this.
Could you repeat your question?
It's, it, it, it waives all sorts of accountability requirements, and it's, um, it's regarding, um, let's see.
Attendance, basically.
Yeah, attendance.
And DSE.
Yeah.
I think this is one where reading the entire resolution might help.
Yeah, sure.
Well, could I just ask a question first? Do you already get direction from DSE regarding attendance?
Oh, we do. We get lots of direction from DSE about the way we have to code attendance. There's a, uh, they just changed it. There's, um, numerous ways they're asking for it to be coded. I think one of the things that we're seeing is with our students set remote, due to circumstances, due to, uh, what's going on in the child's life, they may not be able to get on at the same time that the teacher's on. However, if it's, uh, video, they can go in and access it. They're still present, and for us, we're struggling a little bit with setting those parameters that still, uh, fit within DSE to acknowledge the fact that the kids really are learning and are present. So if that speaks to the question, um, the flexibility and just the understanding that things are going on in people's lives, and they might not be able to check in at eight-thirty in the morning. They might check in at four o'clock in the afternoon, but they're still present.
The way I read this is more of the in-person, and that students that are, if you read the whereas circumstances may require students may be absent from school for reasons that may include extended illness, exposure to illness, including COVID-19, or the judgment of parents at garden is determining that it's not safe for their student, students to return to school building or other learning venue. And I, I feel like whereas we already have the online piece so, um, fluid and, in working in such a way where we do have those concessions for families that aren't able to necessarily be on, where we have the, um, you know, the simultaneous online and in-person instruction. I think this is more to, so that some districts may be, the way that their attendance policies may be, to give it specific, um, COVID coverage, whereas those students wouldn't be, like, with the attendance policy that we just reviewed. Um, they wouldn't get, you know, one of, for three or more absences in a, in a particular, uh, grading period, that, that wouldn't be penalized for their attendance, or the maximum or minimum, I think it's just giving more of a COVID-specific, um.
I think, but I think this is more for, for the accountability grade that a school district gets. When part of that formula is the number of students that are absent, and they don't care generally why they are absent.
Right.
And so that can really impact the school's overall, uh, status and rating, and what level they're put on. So I think this is just saying, in light of the pandemic, give the districts a break, which I agree with, but
And that, that measure is new, so they decided to add attendance to the accountability system a couple of years ago. Um, and I've been adamantly fighting with them about that because we don't control attendance. And, uh, so we've had definite emails, I'm not popular with the Accountability Office because I'm frustrated by it, so. And they're now with codes, and they continuously changing our student information system, and everybody can't figure out, like, we're always supposed to code them and so on, and we're getting graded on that, and accountability rating will go up or down depending upon that. And I think that's probably what they're trying to say is get off our back. Let us work, you know?
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, four zero zero.
Okay, I think it covers all ten of the resolutions, so I will present, um, our opinions or our, where our voices on November seventh is the, um, the MASC Resolutions Committee, um, Delegate Conference. It is going to be by Zoom, so it should be interesting. I, I don't know how that's going to work with three hundred-something-plus districts being represented. I think Zoom has a hundred-person capacity, so it should definitely be an interesting experience. And I look forward to reporting how that turns out, um, at our meeting following, um, the Delegate Assembly.
Thank you. Um, one question I did have is, I'd love to, to know how, like, last year's resolutions, how those, not how you voted on them, because I'm sure we heard about that, but just if they were carried out, if they were, if they were successful.
I can definitely find out, um, what is in the works. I know that some of them were, um, for example, I believe that there was one on, um, like, kind of like a plastics type of a ban, or, or, or
Yeah.
in regard to trays, um, and I believe that some of them have a five-year rollout period. Um, some of them might have been more, um, district-specific, but I do have, um, a contact on the, um, MASC Board, so I can definitely reach out to them and get
Yeah, even if you just send us an email.
Yeah, and definitely update on where we stand from where we voted from last year, but it was, it's definitely a fascinating process to see how, you know, the resolutions get put forth. And it, just like we had discussions, it's almost, it's the, those discussions on steroids, because you have hundreds of people citing different examples and changing things and splitting things and striking things and rewording things. So it's, it's definitely very interesting to, to watch it all come together and then kind of be presented in a new way, and something that can enact change and make all of the districts across the Commonwealth perform and, and succeed.
Okay, thank you. Um, next on the agenda is the release of executive session minutes. Um, the minutes for the following dates will be released, February third, two thousand twenty, March twentieth, two thousand twenty, and June third, two thousand twenty. And after that, any other business? Anyone have any other business? Um, all I wanted to, to say, to note is that our next meeting, again, is not in two weeks, it's in three weeks. So that's on November fifth, Thursday, November fifth. Um, and before that, on November third is our all-day budget meeting, which will be held in person and via Zoom.
So November, November third, we've got the all-day, November fourth, we've got policy review, November fifth, we have school committee, oh, geez.
And November seventh is the Delegate Assembly. It's going to be quite a week.
All right, so after that, all I need is a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, thank you.